Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, March 31st, 2025 at 6:00, sorry, 6:30 PM, in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of the recommended fiscal year 2026 budget presentation.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for March 31st, 2025. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
Thank you. And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our action item tonight is the recommended fiscal year 2026 budget presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation or listen to the presentation.
Second. We got a motion by Russell and a second by Jones. So, first of many nights, we are here together to be able to talk about the budget for fiscal year 26. Let me just start by saying something first, though, if you don't mind, Jennifer. So, our city manager is not joining us here tonight in person, but he is joining us virtually. Mike, we just all want to say that we're really glad you're okay. And we want to ask you to please get better and get some rest and make sure that you're taking care of yourself. And we do appreciate that you're here with us tonight to be able to answer any questions that we have. We know we're going to be hearing from Jennifer. But just know that we're all thinking of you and praying for you. So, thank you very much and get better.
Yeah, thank you very much, Brad. And you're not going to see a lot of me in the next couple of weeks, but I've got a great team and so you'll get to experience more of that.
Yeah, that's great, Mike. Thanks. And your great team's doing really well. And Nurse Corey says that you need to definitely make sure that you're getting all the rest you need. So, yeah, we'll make sure of that, too. All right, so with that, we have a good presentation tonight. We have a lot of information to cover. I just want to make sure that I reiterate the things that I said last week, that this information is going to get repeated a lot. There's going to be a whole lot of time to be able to discuss this. We, as a council, are going to discuss this. There's going to be a lot of public input as we go through this process. There's public hearings coming up for multiple days. So, just keep that in mind as we hear this information. And then sometimes the information requires more information to be able to get some really good answers and give us a fuller sense of what we're really looking at here. But this is sort of the start of this process, more or less. I mean, we started by setting the property tax rate already. However, we have an opportunity here to lower it, not raise it. But really, what we're doing is we're looking through what the recommendation is, and a lot of us are seeing this for the first time. So, going through all this to be able to have a bigger discussion here in the next couple of weeks. So, with that, Jennifer, I will turn it over to you. Thanks for being here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer, here to present the city manager's recommended fiscal year 2026 budget. All right, so the budget process actually started in August with city council goal-setting. So, these are the goals that are the foundation for the budget recommendation. So, these are the items that departments work on in their budget preparation. And these are the top priorities and the high priorities that a lot of the five-year capital improvement program addresses. Many of these priorities, and you'll see that as we go through all the nights of department presentations coming up. Whoops, sorry. My notes. So, the equitable community and organization of choice was a philosophy adopted by council in 2024. In addition to city council goals and priorities, our city staff also applies this philosophy to the budget process. So, we take into account equity as we're preparing department budgets. And the theme of this budget recommendation centers around major capital improvement program projects, public safety, and streets. So, I think we've seen this graph quite a few times showing Dubuque County populations over time. So, of course, Dubuque experienced significant population loss in the 1980s, and then we see growth here. The slide is not quite coming through clearly, but we'll pretend we can read the years there. But what it's intended to show is investing in Dubuque is essential, not only to revitalize our economy, but also to ensure we have a thriving community for generations to come. So, the theme is, you know, needing to invest in our capital, our infrastructure, to keep people here and wanting to come to Dubuque. Oh, my goodness. Okay, sorry. It just seems to be those graphics, but we'll skip through those, Randy?
Yeah.
What's happening?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take a minute here, and Randy will see if he can fix things so we can see things that aren't gibberish.
Randy, the PDFs that we have are right.
We're going to switch to. Put it on the desktop.
That's a backup.
Well, there you go. Something had to go wrong, so there it was. Yep.
Thanks.
There it is. Thanks, you, too.
Okay. So, here is the historical population slide showing that population growth. And then showing that, you know, we do have that population growth. There are many other communities in our area that are not experiencing such growth. So, again, emphasizing that investment in our community is very important. All right, so moving on to contacts for our 26 recommended budget. We have experienced supply chain issues, rising costs for fuel, vehicles, equipment, construction materials. We do have recommended wage increases in the 26 budget. We have already approved police bargaining unit contract with 5% for '26. The same for the fire bargaining contract, 3.5%. That's already approved. We have an approved operating engineers' contract with a 3.5% increase. We have two Teamsters bargaining unit agreements that are still in negotiations, not yet approved. And then this recommendation includes a 3% cost of living wage increase for all non-bargaining unit employees, and then implementation of the compensation and classification study that the city council had previously approved. Focusing on community safety, there were, in prior fiscal years, addition of a total of 10 firefighter positions. There have been four major pieces of fire department equipment added, continued aggressive deployment of security cameras throughout the city. Recently, the police department's precision policing center implementation to help with staffing in the police department, and then the new facility for the 911 emergency communication center. And all city departments support public safety in some way. Under roads and infrastructure, normally, our city streets repayment program is five miles, but we have been doing 10 miles of city streets repaved by our public works department. We have the DOT studying US 20 Northwest arterial intersection for a full reconstruction with $5 million local match. And then the 14th Street overpass improvements, Elm Street and 16th Street. That's a $43 million project. That comes with a $3 million planning grant and a $25 million implementation grant. And then the Southport Mississippi River flood wall improvements. Continued, under infrastructure, we have Central Avenue and White Street corridor improvements. So, in this five-year CIP, we have $8.1 million. Reimagine Comiskey Park Phase 2, there's $1.7 million. Catfish Creek sanitary sewer shed, sewer and lift station. There's a total of $50 million, and we are seeking grants for that project. In total, in this five-year CIP, there's $131 million for sanitary sewer expansions, upgrades, and maintenance. Replacement of 500 lead water service lines for $6 million. And then water PFAS mitigation, $9.6 million. A new deep well, $4.5 million. And part, so the water departments, five-year CIP totals $27.8 million. Under economic development, we have investments, continued investments in downtown, as I mentioned, Central Avenue corridor, West End industrial parks, and Chaplain-Schmidt Island access. We have $23 million in this five-year CIP for the Five Flags Center improvements. We have continued supportive housing creation, the Field of Dreams project, development agreements for new hotels and additional hotels, and University of Dubuque's John and Alice Butler School of Medicine. Working on improved customer service, so there has been a reorganization of the engineering department to align their work being performed with correct titles and compensation, with a slight increase in FTE recommended in this budget with a cost of just over $40,000. Also, reorganization of the city manager's office, eliminating a full-time position, converting vacant director of strategic partnerships position from part-time to full-time, and that is no-cost increase. And then temporary position in the sustainability office set to expire at the end of this current fiscal year is extended through June of 2026. Opportunities for grants and forgivable loans to date, grants to the city of Dubuque totals just over $33 million. And then community-wide ARPA-directed funds, just over $26.5 million. We have county ARPA of almost $16 million. Total federal, state, and private funds of almost $124 million. And total federal, state, county, and private of almost $141.6 million. Moving into fiscal year 26 recommended budget, first, a historical slide on tax rate change. You can see in '22, we actually reduced our rate, and there was no impact to the average homeowner. '23, again, a tax rate reduction, 3% increase to the average homeowner. '24, an increase of 1.96% in tax rate, 3% increase to the average homeowner. '25 was a 0.25% increase, which resulted in a 5% increase to the average homeowner. Looking at '26's recommended budget, the tax levy is proposed at $29,861,901. That's a 5.77% increase over '25 adopted. The tax rate is recommended to increase 1.38% with a rate of $10.06. Looking at all the property tax classes impacted, residential property would be a 3.9% impact or $33.88 in the city share of their taxes. Commercial would be 1.78% or $74.26. And industrial would be 1.71% or $85.68. We do have a lot of the other comparable cities over a population of 50,000. There are 26 proposed rates. We have all except for Ink- Ankeny and Waterloo. So, Dubuque is still showing as the lowest property tax rate among those comparable cities, the highest being Waterloo, which is 119% higher than Dubuque. And the average is 55% higher than Dubuque's 26 proposed rate of $10.06. So, since 1989, the average homeowner has averaged an annual increase in costs of the city portion of their taxes of 1.45%. That's about $9.28 a year. Part of that timeframe, the state did not fully fund the home said tax credit. If they had, the average homeowner would have averaged about $6.62 per year. In '26, the residential rollback factor will, that should say increase, sorry, will increase from 46.3428% to 47.4316% or a 2.35% increase. So, this means that it increases the value each property is taxed on, and so it not only impacts residential property, it also impacts commercial and industrial property because the first $150,000 of their assessed value has the residential rollback applied to their tax calculation as well. So, the increased taxable value for the average homeowner, which is $91,067 in '25, increasing to $93,207 in '26, results in more taxes to be paid per 1,000 of assessed So, this is a slide on the annual loss of tax revenue from the multi-residential property classification that was created by the state in 2017. In 2025, multi-residential rolled into the residential property tax class. So, they received the full residential rollback now going forward. But it's an annual loss of $5.63 million to the city of Dubuque, and the city was not provided a backfill of property taxes from the state. Looking at significant issues impacting the '26 budget, as I mentioned, multi-residential was combined with residential in '25. We had the new home said exemption for 65 and older that went into effect last year, and it's fully phased in in '26. That's a revenue loss of $224,174. We had the military exemption, which was previously a credit, now an exemption. That's a $68,016 revenue reduction. Some changes in revenues in '26, we had an increase in riverfront property lease revenues, an increase of about $163,000. Local option sales tax, a very slight reduction, $21,580. That's based on actual receipts in the current fiscal year. Hotel motel tax, seeing significant growth there, predicting a $534,000 revenue increase. And of course, I note Moody's upgraded the city bond rating in July of 2023. So, that's very helpful for all of the capital projects that we will be doing and some of the debt issuances that will come with those projects. We also have a decrease in gaming revenue of about $192,000. That takes into account their renovation, but also there's other casinos opening. So, it takes into account their projections of the market. Increase in interest revenue of $582,000. So, this is what is happening after we signed a new banking services agreement. Excuse me. So, we are receiving more interest on all of the city's accounts. Decrease in gas and electric franchise fee revenue, about $797,000. And most of that is on the gas side, so it's based on the amount of revenue collected on the gas side of the franchise fee. Slight increase in the city contribution to the municipal fire and police retirement system. It was only an increase of 0.09%. No change to the city portion of the health insurance expense. Excuse me. So, the city is self-insured, so we have healthy fund balances in our health insurance fund. So, we're able to keep our rates the same for our health insurance expense to departments in '26. We have an increase in electrical energy expense of 20%, so that's based on the rate increases that have gone into effect for Alliant. And then we do have debt for large infrastructure projects planned in this five-year CIP. Mentioned previously, the 3.5% increase for the Dubuque professional firefighters and the International Union of Operating Engineers. And then we have the 5% for Dubuque Police Productive Association. And then we have the recommended 3% for non-represented employees, and then the implementation of the comp and class study. And then we have the two Teamsters unions under negotiation. So, the estimated cost of the general fund for all of those increases is just over $2 million in '26. This is looking at the state backfill payments. So, this was where the state put a 90% rollback on commercial and industrial, and they were backfilling that difference in revenue, and then they started phasing it out, as you can see in this graph. So, by 2029, that'll be the last year we receive any backfill for that revenue difference, and then we will receive nothing from the state beginning in 2030. So, this is another revenue loss the city is experiencing from the state. In '26, we're expected to receive $646,603. Moving into the five-year capital improvement program, so our five-year CIP focuses on modernization, maintenance, extension of sanitary sewer systems to accommodate growth that the city is currently experiencing. So, from January of '25 through December of '29, the city will spend over $131 million on sanitary sewer and wastewater treatment plant improvements. So, that would be the current fiscal year through December of '29. Also, in this five-year CIP, we're projecting to issue $152,147,710 in new debt, and we will retire $139,519,604 of existing debt. So, we are increasing our debt by $12.6 million. In '26, our use of the statutory debt limit would be 33.5%. And by the end of this five-year capital improvement program budget in 2030, we would be at 32.9% of our statutory debt limit. So, we use strategic use of debt for infrastructure projects. The older a piece of infrastructure gets, the more its maintenance costs increase. The longer we wait to invest in infrastructure, the more costs are increased by inflation. And if the investment in infrastructure is not made in this interest rate environment, it will eventually need to be made when interest rates could be higher, which could also increase the costs. And the massive amount of federal grant money that is being made available is incentivizing the city to want to do the projects as well. Part of, so the main projects in that $152 million of debt, the biggest projects are sanitary sewer projects at $78.4 million. We have Five Flags renovation at just under $23 million. Water projects, just under $16 million. Fire equipment improvements at about $7.1 million. We have the Central Avenue corridor at $6.4 million. Federal building renovation, $5.6 million. Parking ramp maintenance at $5.2 million. Airport improvements at $2.3 million. And park development at $2.2 million. So, that includes about $1.6 million for Comiskey. So, highlighting some major projects in the five-year CIP, we have the Catfish Creek Sewer Shed, Interceptor Sanitary Sewer, that's $47 million in total. We have Water Resource Recovery Center, High Strength Waste, $6.2 million. We also have the Industrial Controls Update, $3 million, and the BOD capacity upgrades at $1.1. We have Southwest arterial water main extension, $1.7. Private lead water service line replacements, $5.7. The water PFAS reduction, $9.5. And then a third pressure zone for $2 million. Also, Cooper Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Lift Station, $1.5 million ARPA grant, and a total project cost of $1.5 million. The B Branch gate and pump replacement, $28.2 million, $8 million coming from U.S. EDA grant. Then we have the 14th Street Overpass, $43 million project, $25 million from Raze Grant, $9.2 million from DMATS, and then we have support coming from the Dubuque Racing Association. And I previously mentioned the Northwest arterial US 20 Dodge improvements. That totals $17.5 million. And $12 million Iowa DOT allocation, $5.5 million from the city. Also, 10 miles of overlay projects by Public Works. Talked about 14th Street Overpass, Central Avenue corridor improvements. Looking at the use of the debt limit, Dubuque with the planned debt in '26 would be at 33.5%. So, we would be the fifth lowest in, as compared to the cities with population over 50,000. Des Moines would be 104% higher, and the average would be 27% higher than Dubuque. So, in '26, we would be projected to have total debt of $167.8 million. So, again, 33.5% of statutory debt. And just looking back at June 30th, 2015, the city had $295.6 million, and we were at 90% of our statutory debt limit. So, the city is projected to have 8.5 million more in debt as of June 30th, 2026. This chart shows retired debt versus new debt. You can see a big spike in fiscal year '25. So, the '25 debt issuance is a combination of three years of debt funding for projects. So, kind of an unusual year because we didn't really issue any debt in fiscal year '23 or '24. So, fiscal year '25 has been a catch-up year. In that same three-year period, we retired $60.72 million in debt, and we issued $84.11 million in debt. Let's see. So, by, again, by the end of this five-year CIP, we would be at 32.9% of the debt limit. And if we look at 10 years out in 2035, we would be at 19.66% of our debt limit. Looking at another chart of our statutory debt limit, you can see in '26, we're at 33%, and then again in '35, we're at 19%. General Fund Reserves, Moody's recommends a 35% reserve for all AA-rated cities. In '23, Moody's upgraded us from AA3 to AA2. And then in January 2025, when we were going through the process of issuing debt, they affirmed our AA2 credit rating, which is a very strong credit rating. And they cited our local economy as a regional economic center and a solid resident income and full value per capita as some of the positive items in their rating. Looking at our projection for general fund reserves, this is using Moody's methodology. You can see we're way above what they are requiring for AA cities, which is 35%. So, in '26, we're projected to be at 54%, and by 2030, we are still just, just under Moving to recommended rates and fees for enterprise funds, we are recommending a 9% increase for the water fund, which would be an increase of $3.60 per month. Sanitary sewer, also a 9% recommended fee increase, which is a $4.92 monthly increase. Curbside collection, 5% recommended increase, which would be $0.86 per month. Stormwater is a 5% increase, which would be $0.53 per month. So, the average monthly costs would increase by $9.91. And just a reminder that we do offer income-qualified residents a base fee reduction up to 50%. In the fiscal year '26 budget, there were just over $2.3 million in general fund improvement requests. Of that, $1.7 million was recurring, about $595,000 was non-recurring. There is $261,720 recommended in this recommended budget for non-recurring, and $608,385 in recurring improvements included in this budget recommendation. So, if the city council approves the budget recommendation as presented, it will support continued investment in the people, businesses, and organizations that are making a difference in our community, and continued investment in the infrastructure that must exist for Dubuque to continue to thrive. And of course, we have many public input opportunities. We have seven public meetings coming up where departments make presentations on their department's budgets on April 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 9th, 10th, 22nd, 24th, and the public has the opportunity to speak at each of those meetings. We have our public hearing to adopt on April 28th. Residents can submit a budget comment form online. Feel free to submit those. And you can also contact your city council representative. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure Mike may as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Jennifer. Okay, let's open it up for some discussion here. Well, it's opening up for some discussion here. Yes, Ms. Russell?
Thank you. It's always just amazing to see all that goes into the budget. And one of the slides that you just talked about, slide, I think it was 45, you talked about the enterprise funds. And I wondered if you could explain, maybe to those that are listening, what is an enterprise fund and why can't you just take some money from somewhere else to help bring down some of those rates?
Sure. So by Iowa State Code, enterprise funds are required to charge enough fees to cover their expenses. So for example, the water enterprise fund has to charge enough water fees to cover water expenses. Same with sanitary sewer, curbside collection, and stormwater. There's no co-mengling of funds by state Iowa code. They must be self-supporting by state law.
Okay. I think that's really good to remember as you're looking about how we determine those rates. Thank you.
I know you're not gonna be that quiet. Anybody next? Yeah, Mr. Resnick?
I guess I'll be next.
Yeah, there you go.
Because we've all thought about this quite a bit and how to put it succinctly and fairly. I mean, things are already tough in, for everybody here in Dubuque. And I don't think we should try to make things worse with short-sighted decision-making such as, well, I'm gonna just compare to this to taking care of my car right now, which is a 20-year-old car. And what are people looking at? Do you do, do you do the scheduled maintenance? Or do I just let it go and buy something new with perhaps high tariffs, already high prices, economic turbulence? I think a lot of people are like myself and are doing the best we can to take care of what we have. And there's, and just like the car, take care of your car, take care of your city. It has the same reasons. I was looking up the different pluses and minuses of, you know, of that situation. And of course, the car people say that when you keep up the scheduled maintenance, you increase safety, reduces malfunctions. Same thing with what Jennifer was talking about there. Performing at its best, our city is more sufficient with planned, all the planning that Ms. Russell was talking about. I think they've done that. Taking care of things saves you money, prevents more costly issues from rising, and keeps your, the car value higher and keeps our city value higher. So to me, it's a kind of a question versus scheduled maintenance and deferred maintenance. And we'd all like to lower prices for everybody. I know I would like to have, as a person on social security, I would love to have lower prices all around. But as Mr. Van Milligan has said, that deferred maintenance is debt. And I, you know, debt, I don't think we want to be in that place. So I know we have problems, but ignoring problems makes things worse. So for me, I would like to say that I think we need to do, we need to look clearly at the situation and see with all the different things going on in our country and in our state, that we are very fortunate to live in this highly efficient, beautiful city and we need to take care of it. And that's the reality. And that's what I'm gonna, that's why I'm gonna support this budget. There's a lot going into it. Citizens can look at individual things that, and say yes or no about, we really need that. But a lot of work has gone into that already. I intend to support this budget for the reasons that I've mentioned, but I'm going to remain open-minded through this process. So as the mayor was quoted in the newspaper, we have time to look at this and look at it closely. And I intend to do so because I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the skinflint side of things. So I do want to try to save every bit we can, but I don't want to gut the muscle out of our city that's moving us ahead for our citizens. Again, the city of Dubuque are the citizens. The citizens of Dubuque are the city. So we want to do the best for the city, for the citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So speaking of pocketbook issues, just like at home, the city also has pocketbook issues. And I think the budget message, the document that we saw was so thorough that I think it was very impressive, actually, the stepping stone through each individual department and the pros and cons and what it is that we're going to be doing. One thing that I think is important for everybody to be aware of is that the use of debt over five years is extremely important, as we talked about making sure that the infrastructure is retained. And we, you listed out all of the main points. It was the federal building renovation, solid waste and sanitary, the water system, stormwater, Five Flags, Central Avenue, et cetera. And could you explain, Jennifer, just so that people know, you had mentioned that we were retiring some debt and then we were issuing new debt. And I think it'd be important for people to have an understanding of this pocketbook issue because debt means a burden and it means obligations to the budget, if you will, to the family budget. So I would appreciate if you could just explain that for everybody so they understand how we can extend ourselves and what the requirements are.
Sure. So through the budget process, we determine what projects, first of all, we wish to issue debt for. So we only, as a city, issue debt for capital projects, typically projects that have a long useful life. We typically issue 20-year general obligation bond debt, so significantly long debt. And through the budget process, we plan for the source of funding that repays that debt. So the principal and interest on that debt, we essentially set aside funding for that 20 years from that funding source to pay the debt that we are planning. So it isn't a case where each budget year, we're trying to find, you know, funding to pay that debt. We've already set it aside and we have that budget for the debt service, the principal and interest on any debt that we have planned or we have already issued. We've already taken that into account.
And then how does that tie into the statutory debt limit?
Sure. So the, the state Iowa code has a requirement that every city has a statutory debt limit and it's 5% of the city's assessed valuation. So that's how the statutory debt limit is computed. And you cannot exceed that 5% of your assessed valuation in total debt of what's considered debt that counts against the full strength and credit of the city. So basically, general obligation bonds. TIF rebates also count. TIF debt counts as well. So that would be considered in that debt number. That would be counted against the statutory debt limit.
Right. And it just, proof that the wheel is working extremely well on the car is that Moody's has consistently given us one of these ratings that is quite impressive from a bond point of view. And so I just think it's important to understand that you're very prudent and you're good management all the way around for what is our budget and basically our pocketbook issues. So thank you very much. And I'm in, looking forward to hearing more of the details. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? We are gonna have a lot of time together, so I understand silence too. Okay. All right. Well, if there are no other comments, I'll just say a few things and then I think we'll have a lot of questions as we go through the, the next few nights here and the, over the next few weeks. So let me start by saying that I, you know, as I look through all of this information and you look at the big picture of everything, I really do think that our priorities remain in the right place as a city. You know, I think that this council has worked really hard with the help of city staff and community input to make sure that we're building a strong foundation first and foremost. And, and I think over the last two years in particular, we have spent a lot of time talking about that foundation. I mean, if you look at our priorities, we, we have things that, you know, you mentioned them in the, in one of the first early slides there, focus on public safety, on roads, on infrastructure and, and major projects. And then the, the one thing that wasn't listed on that list, but I do want to make sure I put it on there because you talked about it quite a bit, is the staff that work for all of us at the city. So the public servants that do the work. If you don't have a strong foundation of people and infrastructure and the roads that we drive on and then the things that keep us safe, then that's where cities fall apart. And I think it's really important that we focus on those things and make sure that that is a, a really strong foundation that we're building. And I think we're doing that. I think this budget does it. The challenge is it's not, it's not cheap to do that. It's, it's challenging at times to get it done. But I have to say, you know, I'm, every year, I look at this really carefully and think about what it, obviously what it means for each of us individually in this, in the city when we have to pay these bills. You know, we have to pay the tax bill to be able to do these things. And you have to think about that for every single person. But we're also doing it in a way that I think is, is a very, we use very responsible methods to do it. We have very strategic and responsible use of debt, as you outlined very clearly. And that's been a matter of years. I mean, before, a lot of us, it predates us on this council, I think, that we've learned a lot about strategic and responsible use of debt. Strategic and responsible use of federal grants. You know, there was a mention in there about all the, the federal grant money that was available to us. Now, things are changing sort of in real time as we change administrations here. And this is a real, this is a real issue. This is a real challenge. And we are all very aware of the changes and tracking those changes carefully. But it could lead to some changes in the money that we have coming our way for the city of Dubuque. I think that's a realistic potential outcome, one that we don't like because we worked really hard to go after these grants that we need really badly for really basic things. One example is a grant that helps batteries not blow up when they're being transported to the landfill. Another is a grant that gets us over trains, which I was stopped by a train again today on my way to somewhere. It happens frequently here and it's gonna happen more and more and more. So we're looking at that and seeing that. But we have some really good opportunities with the help of our federal partners, some from our state partners, to be able to move some things forward. And I think it's, it's important that we have, that we, to point out that we've used strategic and responsible use of that. Another thing that, you know, we talk about here and there, but we haven't mentioned it a whole lot lately, is these improved lease payments that we have for riverfront property. That's very much staff and the city manager getting after that and making sure that the people of Dubuque are being paid fairly for the, the property that we lease to companies that are there, I think is, made a huge impact in our ability to be responsible in the use of this money. And then also things like improved hotel motel taxes. That doesn't just happen by accident. People don't just start showing up in your town and staying in your hotels and motels because you have really cool things going on. The Field of Dreams is a major driver of this and we, as people in the city of Dubuque, have invested in that project. We look at it regionally. So, you know, that's one example. There are some ways that these methods are helping us to keep these costs down, even though these costs are continuing to go up in some of these places. So this slide that you have up right now, water, sanitary sewer, curbside collection, and stormwater, this is a place where I'm looking forward to having some really thorough discussion about what's going into those, those cost increases. Because I think I understand pretty fully what those increases are, but I do want to make sure that we talk about every single detail there because we know that we need to have really functional systems. And I understand your answer, Jennifer, of the enterprise funds must pay for themselves to be able to do these things. But I also have some fairly strong opinions about who should be paying for things like PFAS. I don't think it should be cities. I really don't. But we are stuck with that cost. We are. All of us are stuck with the fact that there are these minute plastic particles that, and chemical particles in our, in our water that we now have to deal with on our own. I have a problem with that on its face, but it's not something that we can fix immediately. That bigger problem is not something we can fix. We still have to start paying for it now. We have to deal with something to make sure that our water continues to be safe to drink and then all these other things that go into it. So we're gonna have some really good discussions about all of this. But my bottom line that I'm saying here is that we really do need to build a strong foundation and I think we're doing it. I, I think that this budget continues to do that. And as we've done in past years, even last year, we were able to take a few things and move some things around and change things so that maybe the cost won't be so high. But we'll see where we get as we go through this. The one thing that we know for sure is that we will have a very clear picture of why we are spending our money and what we're spending it on. So with that, since we will be together again come Wednesday night, I don't believe we have anything else to accomplish here aside from voting on the motion that's on the table. I'm not forgetting about that part. I'm looking at Krenna over there, she's looking at me. So we do have a motion on the table to receive and file this information and then here the presentation that Jennifer just gave. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone. With no further business, we'll be adjourned for the evening.[1785.71]